I'll call the meeting to order. Could we please stand for?
To reply to the United States of America. Consider the Republic of Washington's one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My grandson will be six two weeks of the cup scale. We will have the game on as my uncle says, having to. When he will start his own, we need to stand and cross our hearts and put our hats on. So we all did. I said, good for you.
Now, just so everybody knows, we're going to go down through our agenda. Because Cheryl Poirier has another meeting with some of her children at the school today. Tonight at 6:30, she's first. She'll be a little late to be here, hopefully before 7 o'clock. So we'll go down to our agenda first, okay? Uh, do you hear motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Yeah, the motion to adopt.
A second.
On favor or any questions or comments by the board? On favor?
Aye.
If you care. Two little minutes and you pack it for, we have the minutes of 1:23, 23, 1:31, 23, and 2:23. It was an emergency budget meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 23rd, 23, January 31st, 23 special meeting, and February 2nd, 23, emergency budget meeting.
Second.
Any comments or questions? On favor? If you care. 12:40.
Uh, the truck one, International is still at Delary's until tomorrow morning. We'll be going to get it finally. Uh, only take four or five months, but hey, we're there. Uh, the Dodge, the 2012 550 is about halfway done. It's still at Rutland Dodge. Um, I've been in close contact with them. They're just waiting on the transmission oil pan that they need basically. And maybe some other things for the wiring harness to get that finished up. Um, I know we spent quite a bit on getting new trucks and stuff this winter, so I'm not trying to push here. Uh, I am taking into consideration what the current trade-in value on the Dodge is and that International that we're getting back from Delary's because now that we're at the point where we're sinking a lot of money into it, uh, we don't want that to get to a point where we sunk so much into it that it's just, you know, runs your eye on a vehicle that's over 15 years old, you know? Um, so I am going to look at the trade-in values on those, like I said, you know, just, just for something to consider moving forward in the, in the future. Uh, the freight liner that we discussed a couple of times is ordered. Uh, it's in the works, so hopefully we'll see that. We'll definitely see it before next winter and possibly even sooner. Um, we sold the 2001 F-550. It's been out of commission for a year and a half, two years now. Uh, we've cleaned and organized the town garage kind of during some of our downtime. And, um, we did our M Shaw refresh, our annual required M Shaw refresher course. Got everybody up to date on that. We picked up the 2014 used International six wheeler that we purchased from ATG while we were out doing the paperwork for that new freight liner as well. And, uh, there was a small issue with it on the way home that was unforeseeable. Um, I don't think it's going to be expensive one or anything. It's just one part that kind of blew apart as it was in transfer on the way home. Um, and then that should be good to go on the road, ready.
And then we can take, um, we give Hampton's back their truck.
And then we can give Hampton back their truck, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, we want to keep the tandem International empty when it comes back. We really don't want to put a standard in it. Uh, because that'll, that'll leave us with a big truck to put brush or, um, some road filling material, which today is going to be a thing, you know? Uh, some of the roads are getting a little severe and we don't want that to get out of hand for somebody can't get their fuel oil delivery or their ambulance gets stuck or, you know, whatever the case may be. Um, so that'll, that'll leave us that opportunity to do that and Hampton's still getting that truck back when they need it, so. And that's probably it for me. That's for us people last night, so.
Okay.
Anybody has any questions or comments or concerns?
Do you have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Good. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Manager's report. Um, I do have, uh, liquor licenses here for renewal. Shaw's, Polley, excuse me, the, the, the two, um, Kenny Brooks and Stewart. Not a different form than, than it's usually, um, but Betsy told me she just needs a meeting minutes and then for someone to sign this, um.
Does someone want to make a motion? Make a motion to sign the liquor licenses?
I make a motion to sign the liquor licenses.
Second.
Any comments or questions? On favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay.
We'll sign it.
You want to sum that up?
Yeah.
The state is stopping their paperwork all now online.
Online.
Doing it, yes.
Yeah.
Right? I don't have a lot on the agenda on me because I know that the board is meeting with the five, um, yeah, perspectives left.
You came in late, but, um, Cheryl Poirier will be here or another board member. We're not starting the interviews until she'll be here because some of her kids have a, uh, school function and they have a meeting at 6:30. She feels strongly she'll be here before 7:00. So we're just going to go through our stuff.
All right. I think at this point I'll give the four you sent me one.
I'll fill up some time. Um, all right. So I'm here tonight to, uh, give you an update on, uh, merger research that I've done. And, um, Paul and I have been, um, having a few conversations about. Um, I did most of this work today actually, so I'm still trying to take it in, um, and figure out how to present it to you. But, um, essentially what I did was go back to the ballot measures that were set proposed to the voters of both the town and the village, um, find out where we're, we're starting. And, uh, so we are looking at, the voters approved, um, the measures that were to appoint a committee to study the feasibility of a merger between the village of Polley and the town of Polley. Um, so in recent weeks, I've been reviewing, uh, I reviewed what Carol gave me at one of the, um, earlier select board meetings about Polley's attempt to merge the municipalities in 1986. Um, so it looks like at that time, uh, there was substantial progress made, which is really interesting to me that, uh, the municipalities made it all the way to a plan of merger. So that, those materials exist. Um, the, I also reached out to Jacob Hemmerich, who is the Community Planning and Policy Manager with the State Agency of Commerce and Community Development. Jacob gave me a few different, um, towns to, to follow up with to use as case studies. Um, Essex is one that, uh, recently split, um, so it's a possibility for plus mortem study. Um, Ennisburg and Milton merged, and I just found out today that Johnson, um, is in the process of having these conversations between the village and the town. Um, so I spoke with both the village manager and the town manager in Johnson today and fat and ended up with a report that they, they, um, had done a preliminary report on what it would mean to merge those two municipalities. Um, so we have that to review. I found out that it costs between $8,000 to $10,000 for that one initial report. Um, and that they are considering more work, um, uh, around that, around the topic because the report didn't really make recommendations. Um, so they may be, they may be doing a deeper dive. Uh, Polley would definitely have charter work, uh, to do as part of a merger. And, um, I think that, you know, where it stands is that the municipalities need to identify a process for, um, appointing a committee. Um, and that seems likely after town meeting day since the select board has so many seats that are, um, to be available. So in terms of process, it makes sense to, to spend some time with this while the new select board members are getting up to speed. Um, and we have a little bit more research to do. So the only other thing that I would say is that, um, there's been conversations around capital planning um, in the, in the past, uh, six months or so, or maybe even longer. I don't know. Um, and it is, capital planning, uh, should be considered either concurrently or as part of this work. So, uh, there is a municipal planning grant round that's coming up again this summer. And, uh, that's possible grant that the town could consider using for capital planning or the village. Um.
Are there a number of towns like in the U.S. that can get that? Is it limited?
The municipal planning grant.
One out of 10 that, uh, last.
That's a different grant.
That's a different grant.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, um, Polley's used municipal planning grants, um, quite a few times, I think, in the past. Uh, the maximum award for that is $25,000 and it's 10% match.
10%?
Yeah. Um, it's possible that the municipal planning grant could be used to study merger, but it's not a likely, it's not a very competitive application. I don't think the state has, uh, awarded that. So, um, capital planning though is a competitive application for municipal planning grant.
Right.
So that's it, I think, for me. I don't know if anyone has questions at this time, but.
We're currently, um, the planning commission is currently, um, participating in the municipal planning grant for the, um,
Bylaw modernization.
Mm-hmm. Well, Sarah and I went and looked earlier this, this week, or was it last week? Last week. We went down and looked at the town garage thoroughly. And, uh, it's an aisle. Um, that, that has to be on the top of our, uh, list, the top of, the top priority to start getting that engineered out and possibly replace, see what we can find for funding. And if not, we may have to do something that they don't like to do, and that's pay taxes on a bond. Uh, we may have to take a loan or a bond out to build the, the town garage.
But isn't that one of the projects that, when we met with Sarah previously, where we're seeing about the additional funding? That's available and that would be the top priority?
See if we can get it in a short, short order of time.
Get something going on it and.
Get something going on that.
I mean, on that, on the topic of the highway garage, um, since our last meeting, I have had some discussions with, um, Evan Fitzgerald, uh, District of Engineering. Um, he's the, he's the gentleman that had looked at a proposed stormwater plan for the town garage property with Hillary Solomon from the Polley Midway Natural Resource Conservation District. And Evan is looking at the property through the lens of, um, the, the regulations as he knows them related to the proximity to the Polley River. In other words, if we can't replace a building there, are we limited to where it could go? Um, and other restrictions that, that may entail. So he's supposed to get me a report. Sometime this week, I think he said he could get me something.
That's a flood zone, but what rated flood zone is that?
I don't know. I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on Evan to tell me the, to tell me the specifics on that.
Mm-hmm. If we could get that trestle opened up, I could possibly change the flood zone rating and allow us to put a building in there. I don't know. It's, that all has to do with that.
I did, I did look at the, you did, I did, yes. And where the, the new, the new sand shed is, that they built that out of the flood.
Well, that's out of the flood.
It's out of the flood zone.
Is our town garage out of it?
Yes, it is just out of, out of everything else. Towards, towards the river, it definitely can the flood. But it's three zones, you have to.
Yep. Before we do anything, I will make absolutely 100% sure.
As according to the most recent data, which was compiled by G I S survey maps, it pulls out of it, but you can't go anywhere close to the river.
Mm-hmm.
So just for your info.
Okay. Yeah, Nick, hang on, um, is this pertaining to this?
Yeah. Uh, I just had, um, a question in terms of like, what sort of got the highway garage to the point where it is now, like?
Have you ever been in it?
No, I haven't.
Walked in it?
Well.
Go see it and you'll understand.
How did it become such an immediate issue? Like?
Um, it's just lived, it has outlived its time.
Okay.
If, if you walk in there, you will see.
It's a repurposed building.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a very old building.
Gotcha.
I'm saying it's probably, I say it's from, from the early 1900s.
Yeah.
Um, it's been, for lack of better terms, scabbed up.
Okay.
So when, when they, when the equipment got bigger, they pushed out the wall here to get, to allow room for the plow. Um, so it's been a repurposed building from its get-go and it, and over the years, they sort of just, oh, we need more room here. Let's bump out this wall or we need more height here. Let's kind of fix this roof a little higher.
Gotcha. Um. A hodgepodge at this point.
Very much.
It's very much.
Very much, hodgepodge, hodgepodge. And just for a little bit of tidbit information too, the old foundry that used to be there where the senior center is, my foundation is made from the brick that was torn down from the old foundry on my house.
That's pretty cool.
So that was 1921.
Wow. Awesome. And that's how they got the name.
That's shortly after that is when the garage, I think, started up.
Built up. Um, so I guess, would a capital needs assessment or plan, would that include some sort of like scheduled, and I know we're getting a bit ahead of ourselves here, but would that include, I'm just like, I'm not totally sure of what that encompasses. Would that include like a maintenance schedule or something where people are going in and looking at building structures to make sure?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're nowhere near that point. Yeah.
Okay. Um, would it be possible to get a copy of the 86, uh, merger study?
Um, I don't think I have it yet.
Oh, okay.
I'm not quite sure. We did, we have to find it in the files, so, yeah.
Um, I've looked for it and, um, I even asked, um, Jonas Rosenthal if he knew where a copy was, but he didn't know where a copy was. Now Terry Williams thinks he has a copy of it.
His mother had it or something, yeah.
Um, I think, I think beyond what you had, Carol.
Right. And I don't know if Terry might be referring to the information I gave you, Sarah, because his mother was town clerk.
Okay.
When all that was taking place and that's the records from the town reports and what was going on, but we certainly could ask Josephine, you know, and see if she has copies of it.
Yeah, because if, I mean, if it got to the point where there were, you know, had a, a merger plan in place or what, or whatnot, it sounds like a lot of the groundwork, you know?
Some of it, yeah, but things have changed from 1960.
Of course, of course. Yeah, yeah. Um.
One of the major things on it, Nick, was way back then was because the water sewer was not metered the way it is now. That was one of the main controversial things.
Ah, interesting. So they wouldn't have been able to do a utility district like we can't.
Right.
Okay.
And right now it's pretty much set.
Yeah. Uh, and then lastly, the trestle study, uh, for the flood, what's the timeline on that? I didn't, I believe it like started in the summer or?
Well, we just talked about that today a little bit.
We received a brick grant, um, we just received the, the brick grant for that probably two months ago.
Okay.
So the next phase of that is writing, um, RFPs, um, to put it out to bid. And basically, I think we talked about it recently at another meeting. Um, it's basically a study for an engineer to look at, uh, different scenarios of, um, either, uh, convince, convincing the state to do something with the trestle bridge or re-channeling or fill in the blank. I'm going to rely on an engineer to give us an idea if any of his or her ideas would lower the flood plane.
Oh. Awesome.
Anything else? We'll, we'll go into, uh, public comments and concerns.
Sorry, yeah.
You tried to live.
Yeah, I'm a little ahead of myself there. Thanks. No, that's all.
If you have more, we'll go into that.
Right on.
Okay, any other, um, lawful select board business? Are you done, Sarah?
Yes, thank you.
Um, Rutland Regional Planning Commission, do we have any report on that?
Have you been able to attend any meetings, talk meetings or?
No, I haven't had some talk meetings. Um, that I can provide an update on, I submitted three buildings for municipal energy resilience program to, um, Barbara, uh, Noise Pulling, um, the senior center, uh, Stone Bridge and this building. So, um, it's a free assessment of, uh, energy resilience for each of those buildings. And, uh, the way I understand the program to be is that if we may get some of them, we may not get all of them, uh, for the assessment.
When you speak of energy, the, the senior center was interested in possibly, uh, doing, uh, solar panels for energy for their electric bill. And we went and met with one of the people, one of the companies for solar. And, um, it was probably around 90,000, she estimated, just to get enough panels to work for the senior center. Um, she said something around 46 panels. But it only brings, takes 8% off the electric bill a month. That's kind of a big pill to swallow. You, that, that my hair will turn to a different color by the time that breaks.
Yes.
So, but we did look at that, on the energy for the, but there's other means, you know? I don't know if we can do geothermal or something else. I mean, we do have a river right here.
Mm-hmm.
I know the state is starting to, uh, come upon a hydro. There used to be a little dam right down here before the New York border. I don't know if it will generate enough wattage to do something, but maybe around the least.
Okay.
There's just.
The, the forum asked, um, for information around, uh, the energy usage kilowatt hours over a period of five years for each of those buildings and, uh, fuel source and the amount of gallons used for each of those buildings. And then, um, just, you know, structural information, square footage and that type of thing. So, um, I think we, I'm guessing we would hear within a month or two about whether or not those buildings.
Would be.
Yeah, will be part of the program.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good. That would be good news. Okay. Public comments and concerns?
I'll just, what, what is the electric bill, the kilowatt hour for the Younger Heart?
The Younger Heart, the kilowatt hours, I don't know, but it's around, I thought the bill was around, I can't remember now. I've seen so many of them. I, I would have to, I have a meeting there next Monday and I can get that information.
If I have four and a half pounds for my house and it pays it for three months, for nine months, uh, it's a year, it pays the whole bill, the four and a half pounds.
Because I'm always, this person was a person that sells.
It's, it's.
So I.
What company did you go for?
What's that?
What company did you look into?
They did. They set that up. We just went in to look because it is a town building. There was a person on the board there that set that up. But if something was to happen, I would look differently on it. Um, I'd look a little more closely.
If it did.
That was just a quick synopsis of the person, um, that worked for that solar company. Any other public comments and concerns? Yes.
Right, um, at the, um, the last emergency meeting, um, that was the time when the select board decided to pull the petition on, um, having the voters vote on how to, uh, configure the East Polley Bridge to lane or one lane. And I was wondering why, it wasn't really, it wasn't really discussed too much. I both presented two letters. But I was wondering why the select board members actually voted against the petition on the town meeting day ballot, um, even as an advisory vote?
That's a good question.
I just felt that as an advisory vote, it's not binding on anything. It's basically giving information and so forth. That's why.
But we found out that you, you did read the letter, right?
Oh, yeah.
And correct me if I'm mistaken. Um, lawyers, before we do anything, I, we always as a board find out what is the correctly, the legal. And the lawyer, if I'm right, says once the board votes on a subject, that, that, that subject cannot be petitioned. Am I right with that call?
I don't know if that's right or wrong.
That was the, um, that was the, the, yeah, that was the letter. It said that taking care of the highways is under the purview of this select board. And when a select board makes a decision in regards to highways, that's the decision.
That's what, that was my understanding of everything we had on it, that infrastructure.
So.
But he also says if the town wants to put this article on the warning, they certainly can. But it's only advisory, not.
Exactly, not binding, not binding.
Right. And so I just thought it would be important for the voters to have a choice in this because it wasn't.
Can I ask what, what's the choice?
The choice is yes or no, um, on the, on the vote.
It's not going to change anything.
It's not going to change anything. It's non-binding.
It's not going to change.
But it would at least let the select board know the actual opinion of the residents. So anyway, that's, I just wanted to get that out there. Um, also, um, well, do you remember when the bridge was turned from two lane to one lane?
I do.
You do?
I was on the board then. But this is how it happened.
I know how it happened. I just want to know what year it was.
Oh, what year?
Yeah.
Oh, you may have to look back in minutes. But Jonas Rosenthal was our town manager.
Right.
Uh, Tom Clutey was on the board, the mayor.
Yeah.
And myself and, um, um, Mr. Lewis was the, was the chair, Ed Lewis, and we had, uh.
Was George Miller on it at the time?
No, no, it was Frank.
Oh, Frank Fresson, of course.
Frank Fresson was on. The reason I went to one lane is we have our bridges inspected by the engineers and they said to drop the weight limit and we had
Right.
an issue with two lanes and the weight limit with two school buses going over it and would be exceeding the limit.
Right. So, so what else did you have to do when you switched it from two lane to one lane?
We had to derate the bridge.
But did you have to do an engineering study?
They did it for us. At the time, I do believe the engineers did that.
But that was just to look at the condition?
That's just to keep it open.
Right. But there was no redesigned, so really little needed to be done to accomplish changing it from two lanes to one lane.
At that point in time, the way that bridge was.
Right. May I interrupt?
Sure.
Because you're going off memories that are probably faded over time.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, you may be, you may be mistaking something that, some year timeline, whether or not a study was done, was it done, wasn't it done? I mean, I think, I think the fact of the matter is, um, you know, people are overlooking the state's letter. Also, it said, here's why we suggested two line bridge, different safety protocols. Here's what's going to happen. You're going to delay it to 2024. Again, I've said this in other meetings, I've said it about lawyers and engineers. I rely on their opinions. That's why we pay them.
They let people take, like, they could have taken public comment. I don't know.
I don't know if you guys remember the meeting, but folks were expressing the same exact concerns, and basically the state said, well, let's deal with it later. But now that it's later, it's not really, that's kind of a circular argument. If we couldn't potentially look at changes back then, I mean, that's why there's gonna be a delay.
If you're, if you're referring to the August 2022 meeting, that meeting was not a meeting to talk about the design of the bridge. It was a meeting to introduce the public liaison. If you have a question about the project, this is the person who is going to, you're going to go to to ask a question. That meeting was not about the design whatsoever. It was never intended to be that way.
Perhaps if the town had been invited, or the townspeople had been invited as part of the process earlier, then they would have been able to.
They were quite extensively.
Didn't the townspeople express that they wanted to see the town, or that it's striped that way? And that it was the Select Board that decided that they didn't want to do it?
But we have to look at the interest of the entire, what, almost 3,000 voters of the town of Polkney. Based upon the studies we've had with the state and like that, we felt we were doing the best for the safety and like that.
If you look at like the, you know, Paul mentioned the concerns of what the study were, and they were pretty miniscule concerns, like, oh, it could make it take one more second to cross the bridge, like it was, or like it's going to distribute, like, might be difficult to steer in the snow. I mean, how many of you folks here are steering across that bridge in, in the snow? Even when it was still open, it's not as if it was one that was widely traveled. If, I'm sure that if you look at the traffic data, there's probably more data that is showing folks that are using it for strava, strava for bicycling, for running, for other, otherwise using it for recreational purposes, or at least since.
As they do on a bridge.
So if those are the majority of the folks that are using the bridge, then wouldn't it make sense?
Not the majority of the folks using the bridge. That is a major shortcut on the other side of Lake St. Catherine over to East Polkney. A lot of heavy equipment goes over that bridge daily, quite a number. It's not all year, but, oh, you're kind of, all right, that's enough of that.
I just have one more comment, and this is actually, Jane Williams wanted to attend tonight, she was unable to.
Who?
Jane Williams.
Okay.
So I'm just conveying a comment that she wanted me to make for her behalf. And I do agree with her. Contrary to what the Vermont AOT claims, there's, what the petition was asking is there's no need for a redesign, as the engineers keep saying, to return the East Polkney Bridge to a one-lane road. The structure planned would remain the same, only the road would be striped differently. So she just wanted to get that out there for you folks.
It'd be a lot different, it could be one lane instead of two.
The engineers are saying we'll have to redesign the whole project.
To redesign the entrance and the exit, and then you're losing all federal money.
But you're, you're, you would potentially jeopardize your federal funding.
You would potentially jeopardize all federal money.
But I don't, I mean, this, I mean, I won't speak for the board, but this thing, this has been, this has been decided.
I mean, yeah, it's been decided.
With all due respect to everyone that has a different opinion, it's been decided. And the commentary said if the Select Board had decided, that's the decision.
Well, I think it's important for the Select Board to, to know that there are other opinions out there.
We know.
And there are people concerned about the safety on the bridge, so you know, it's good that we're having a dialogue about it, but I, I think it's important to take the residents' concerns into consideration.
Yeah.
And the thing is, the striping that Jane is talking about is not to put a change order in to the state, but to have the town stripe it ourselves. Just take, take it out of the state's mix.
All that, don't step on the contract that we signed.
I mean, again, I rely on engineers, I rely on them to tell the town what an engineer who is educated as, as an engineer opinion is. And with all due respect to Ms. Williams, an engineer, many engineers, their state engineer, their consulting engineer, has said contrary to what Ms. Williams is, is stating. So I'm, you're probably gonna recommend that the Select Board all day long rely on what an engineer is telling them, as opposed to what a layperson is telling them.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I see Nan, hold on, I have a hand up.
Nan? Nan, can you hear us?
Good evening. Yes, I can. Can you hear me? Like it or not, I just wanted to add that Jeff just stated incredibly clearly why, for safety reasons, this bridge should remain to be striped for one lane. And you guys know about the safety reasons, and, and you're blatantly disregarding that. And that's all that I wanted to say. You guys have a wonderful evening.
Okay, Nan. Great, thank you. Great. Any other comments or questions by the board, or by anybody?
I just, I have a question, because I couldn't really find a lot of information on it. I think it was like 2007, the bridge, and I'm just wondering about, you know, on the inside, the bridge was two lanes and then it was changed to be one lane? Why?
It was weight.
Okay.
Weight. We had, we had our bridges looked at, I believe every two years by the state engineers.
Okay.
Department of Transportation. And we had to derate the bridge. Because of the weight, because it was starting to rust and, it couldn't hold 20,000. We had to knock it down to 9,000 pounds.
And this new bridge is gonna get old, you know, as it, as time goes on? Are we gonna put it to one lane in X amount of years anyways, like we did last time?
Oh. The future people worry about that one. Okay, all right.
The bridge, as my recollection is, the, the bridge that's gonna be there will have a 75-year, expected 75-year lifespan.
Yeah. I think the 140 bridge has got a pretty good lifespan on it too. And the one down by the Legion, we have another one coming on 31 pretty quick. All right, at this time, if there's no more public comments or concerns, we are going to go into executive session and start interviewing the candidates for the Select Board, and we will make a decision tonight.